Hello and welcome to the Town of Dudley Planning Board. Excuse me, Wednesday, July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Present this evening, we have Mr. Richard Clark joining us on the phone. Steve Wettrober, Clerk of the Board, he's present tonight. Thomas Chinaki member present. We have our newest member, David Durgan with us. Welcome, David, thank you. And we have our acting Town Planner, William Scanlon, present, and myself, Guy Horn, Chairman. So, in our agenda, first item on the agenda is the welcome to our newest member, David Durgan. And I'm gonna ask the Board if, what's their pleasure? Would they wanna reorganize the Board that we have everybody here? Or do they wanna wait till the next meeting? It's up to the, to them?
Everyone here, I'd say just do it now.
Okay. If we're gonna vote tonight for any votes that we take, because we have one member on the phone, we're gonna do roll call votes. So, basically, when we ask for the vote, you'll state your name. And if you're for the vote or against the vote, just state what your vote's gonna be. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Clark.
If I may, I would like to suggest that we nominate Mr. Horn to continue as the role of Chairman.
Okay, so we have one nomination. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a nomination, we have a second, so. So, roll call vote then, all in favor? State unit, please, Thomas. Okay, Dick Clark.
Steve Wettrober, aye.
Dave Durgan, yes.
Okay, myself, Guy Horn, aye. And?
Vice Chair.
Vice Chairman.
I'll nominate Richard Clark as Vice Chair.
We have a nomi-
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, I have been the Chairman of the Library Board of Trustees and would prefer not to be wearing two hats.
Okay.
I'll nominate Steve Wettrober, top vote getter this year.
Okay, we have a nomination for-
Happily second, second bad vote.
We have a nomination and a second, so roll call vote on that.
Aye.
Richard Clark, aye.
Dave Durgan, aye.
Steve Wettrober, aye.
Guy Horn, aye. Okay. And then we have to nominate a Clerk of the Board. So, somebody wanna make a motion for that?
Make a motion.
Chairman, I would nominate Mr. Chinaki as Clerk of the Board.
We have a nom- we have a nomination, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a nomination and a second. All in favor? Mr. Derg-
Dave Durgan, aye.
Mr. Clark, aye.
Mr. Clark.
Steve Wettrober, aye.
Guy Horn, aye.
Aye.
You're voting for yourself?
Vote for myself.
Alright, so now we have the reorganization out of the, out of the way with some minor changes. The next item on our agenda, we have approval of minutes from June eighth and June twenty-second, but I didn't see the twenty-second minutes in here.
Didn't see the twenty-second, but we finished the eighth today. They're in your binder.
Okay. So, does anybody wanna make a motion that we approve the minutes from June eighth?
Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote on the minutes?
Richard Clark, aye.
Clark.
Dave Durgan abstain.
Okay.
Steve Wettrober, aye.
Tom Frack, aye.
Guy Horn, aye. Okay, so we have four ayes, one abstention. Mr. Durgan was not at present at that meeting?
Oh, yeah, I think I missed the eighth.
I think, I might have missed that meeting.
You missed it also? Okay.
So, it'd have to be a-
So, you wanna change your vote to abst- to abstain?
Yeah, all abstain.
Okay, so we have two abstentions on the minutes and three ayes. So, June eighth is approved with, with the three people that were here. Okay, our next item on the agenda is a one-year extension request from J D and D Construction at twenty-four Oxford Avenue. And this is under Tab C, I believe.
Yeah.
Do we have anybody here for, yeah, I think we do.
Mr. Chairman, the site plan approval is up at the end of this month.
Okay.
So, I invited Mr. Ochaki here this evening to talk about the progress in the development of that site and to ask for a one-year extension which is towards normal amount of time that it will grant for an extension.
Okay.
Yes, we're looking to extend the permit for another year to continue with the site work outside. The building was, you know, built and the inside was plywooded and it was all secured that way. But the site work outside, drainage, parking lot, everything like that still needs to be done, so we just need a little bit more time in order to finish.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion to extend the site plan review for J D and D Construction at twenty-four Oxford Avenue?
Make a motion to accept the extension on twenty-four Oxford Ave.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Chinaki?
Aye. Richard Clark, aye.
Mr. Clark?
Dave Durgan, aye.
Mr. Dergan?
Steve Wettrober, aye.
Guy Horn, aye. So, we have unanimous? Do we have to sign this?
No, just me.
Just you.
Just with your, with your-
So, you're all set, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Have a good night.
Yep.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, we have A and R plans. And there's none on the agenda, so let's skip that, go down to the next one. Our next item is a seven fifteen P M. site plan review public hearing for Nichols College Townhome Project, but it's not seven fifteen yet, so why don't we skip down to, um, do you wanna go over some planners' plate things or something, Bill?
We can do the Registry of Deeds Form number six, if you like.
Registry of Deeds Forms, so let's take that one.
So, as you know, every year the Registry of Deeds asks each planning board to send a form with planning board members' signatures, so they will recognize who is authorized to sign subdivision plans. So, this is an annual occurrence. I have the form here of each member would go ahead and sign next to their name. And then we'll have Richard come down.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll leave it in the lobby.
Okay.
And Richard, when you're home, you can go down and sign it and leave it for two to pick up.
Is there anything else we could take out of order, Bill?
Can we just blow through standard business there? We don't have much to discuss on those right now, I think you're the most fine.
Bill, standard business, could we go through that now?
Sure.
Okay. So, under standard business, number one, we have discussion and status reports on finishing construction of and acceptance of uncompleted, unaccepted subdivision streets, including Pierpon Estates, Rocky Hill Estates, Country View Estates, Tobin Farm Estates, Lion Estates. I think we have Pierpon Estates coming before us tonight.
Tony? So, Mr. Sekera asked if the planning board would lower the amount of cash the town is holding for completion of three phases of Pierpon Estates. As, as the Board's practice, I had Jeff Walsh from Graves Engineering go out and estimate the cost to completely finish those three phases of the work. So that the town would have enough money on hand to complete the project should something happen and the developer couldn't do it himself. So, Jeff submitted reports from each of these phases to indicate what it would take for the town to, to finish the work if that became necessary. And so, for Phase two C, he estimated twenty-five thousand dollars. And I believe that the town has about, the last report, thirty thousand eight hundred thirty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. So, that would essentially mean he could get about fifty-eight hundred dollars back from the town.
Okay.
Phase two D is Jeff's estimate to complete is thirteen thousand. And I believe we now have about nineteen thousand three hundred fifty-four dollars and forty-five cents. And at the last meeting, I believe the Board approved a cash deposit of a hundred and twenty-three thousand for the final phase. Mr. Sekera was doing some paving at the time, and the Board decided not to include that in the estimate. So, since that work has now been completed, Jeff is estimating the actual cost to complete that project would be a hundred and two thousand. So, he would be asking for about twenty-one thousand dollars to be withheld, to be released for that phase.
So, basically, if we add these three estimates up, it comes up to a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So, we would, the Town of Dudley would retain the hundred and forty thousand dollars, and everything above that would be going, returning to Mr. Sekera.
Tony, do you wanna give an update on where those projects stand?
On the project?
The three phases?
Yes, what we did, we did a verma on the other two, we had the other two bonds, the little ones, like thirty thousand, and the nineteen thousand. So, I did the verma on the street and I installed the, the grids for the red, for the catch basins. And electricity, that was also part of the thirty thousand. So, yeah, that's all, that's what I did. So, we, I have, I mean, we do have, right now it's thirty thousand eight twenty-three and eighty-eight cents. And the other one is nineteen thousand seven hundred eighty-six oh six. And the other one was one twenty-three, should be dropped to one oh two. So, I should be getting about thirty-two thousand back or something like that.
So, according to Jeff's estimates, we're gonna hold a hundred and forty thousand, whatever's above the hundred and forty thousand, it'd be returning back to you.
Yeah, if, I think. Okay, if you, twenty-five, twenty-five, I don't have to do this, twenty-five. Twenty-five, 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 twenty-eight, thirty-eight, thirty-eight, one, thirty-eight, one-
One forty?
Yep.
Yeah, that's right.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Right. So, would somebody like to make a motion that for Pierpon Estates, any escrow accounts that, that total more than a hundred, if all the escrow accounts totaling more than a hundred and forty thousand dollars, the remainder could be returned to the, to the developer?
Is that gonna confuse the issue as far as the, I'm just worried about how the town come, I don't want the, I don't want one of these accounts to go to zero.
Okay, so you wanna do each account based on what the estimate is?
I think we should, we should do them separately, just because that way the accountant will cut loose the money from each account as accordingly.
I just don't want the accountant to get the idea that we wanna just zero out one of these.
Right, right, I understand, yeah. That's the way it should be done, you know, they should have-
Right.
Right.
Just do it all separately.
Right, so we got, we've basically got Pierpon Estates, Phase two C at, remaining at twenty-five thousand dollars. We got two D remaining at thirteen thousand dollars. And we have Phase two E remaining at one oh two, one hundred and two thousand dollars.
Yeah, that sounds good.
So, if somebody would like to make that motion?
Say those numbers again for me, Chairman.
So, two C is at twenty-five thousand. We have two D at thirteen thousand. And we have two E at one hundred and two thousand.
Okay. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we reduce the amount retained in account, in the account for Phase two C to twenty-five thousand dollars. The amount retained for account two D to thirteen thousand dollars. And the amount retained for account two E to one hundred and two thousand dollars.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, can we have a roll call vote on this, please? Mr. Chinaki?
Thomas Chinaki, aye.
Aye.
Mr. Clark, aye.
Dave Dergan, aye.
Steve Wettrober, aye.
Myself, Guy Horn, aye. Unanimous. Okay, Tony, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Abstain, Tony?
Oh, sure.
The road looks nice, by the way. It looks nice.
Thank you. Yeah. Much nicer than a year ago.
Okay, so we're gonna jump back into our agenda, 'cause we had a site plan review public hearing on Nichols College Townhome Project scheduled for seven fifteen, and we're now at seven seventeen, so I'm gonna open the public hearing. I gotta, is there a meeting notice in here, Bill, or eight?
No, I don't think so. I can pull it up if you'd like and read it for you.
Okay. Right, can we put it on the screens? Can we put, can we put these, these pictures on the screens for everybody?
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Yeah.
So, Bill, Bill, so we're gonna let Richard know about this? Do I need anything from you, or?
No.
No? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony. Are we gonna be able to put this on the screens for them?
Uh, I could do that if you like. Just give me a minute, I gotta get this set up, please.
No problem, and then we'll, we'll read the public hearing notice.
No, I don't know, no, they're gonna put it on TV by all means.
Could you pass the time and cheat around, some people in the audience could sign up? Do you want me to read the public hearing notice?
No, would you mind?
Okay. In accordance with the provisions of Section five point oh four Site Plan Review of the Dudley Zoning Bylaw, the Dudley Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, at seven fifteen P M. in the Dudley Municipal Complex, Room three twenty-one A, DMC Veterans Memorial Hall, seventy-one West Main Street, Dudley, Mass., oh one five seven one. On the application of Nichols College, one twenty-one Center Road, Dudley, Mass., for major site plan review, the application involves construction of two new townhome buildings containing a total of fifty-two beds and a parking lot containing fifteen spaces, four of which are barrier-free. The site plan was prepared by Clough Harbor Associates, L L P. of one oh one East River Drive, first floor, East Hartford, Connecticut, dated May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Architectural plans were prepared by Justic attorney Frazier, L. C., eighty-two North Street, Northampton, Mass., oh one six oh eight, dated May twenty-five, two thousand twenty-two. The property is in Res fifteen and Res eighty-seven zoning districts. Copies of the plan and application are on file in the planning board office and the town clerk's office, both of which are located in the Dudley Municipal Complex, seventy-one West, seventy-one West Main Street, Dudley, Mass., oh one five seven one. It may be inspected during regular working hours. The planning board will receive public input at the public hearing. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. If you wish to comment but are unable to attend, please submit comments to the planning board office before thir- four thirty P M. on July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Guy Horn, Chairman, published in the Webster Times, July twenty-fourth and July first, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you, Bill.
Do you need, do you want me just pull up the-
Just, yeah, pull up the, the Townhomes Planning Board presentation.
This one?
Yep.
Okay.
Good evening. First, thank you for your time. My name's Bob Levine, I'm the Vice President for Operations at Nichols College. I have Pete Parent with me, from C H A Engineering. The college wishes to construct two new townhomes on the southwest section of our campus, and I'll point that out in a minute, as to the actual, actual location. The goal here is, is, is we are not increasing beds on campus. Our goal is, over the period of several years, is to start to phase out some older buildings. If you, you may recall, back in two thousand and seven, the college installed three, what I'll refer to as modular type dormitories, residence halls. And our goal over time is to phase them out, and this is kind of the first phase in that process. But the intent is not to increase beds on campus. So, mind if I just point out the location, or do you?
Might, just one question first.
Yeah.
So, these modular units that you're gonna be removing, after this project's completed, how many of those three modular units would be removed?
They'll remain until, the, the, I, I have over a hundred beds there, so what I'm trying to do is, over the next few years, is the goal would be to add a few more, maybe townhouses, and then I can take them offline. Is the goal. I'm not immediately taking them offline, 'cause what we have done is we're de-densifying.
You will be temporarily increasing your-
No, we're actually gonna transfer beds, we're gonna de-densify. So, we're actually going, right now, a lot of our buildings are either triples, quads, doubles, and we'll be de-densifying and transferring those beds into these buildings, physically moving the furniture.
Okay.
Just for clarity, so everybody understands. Center Road, this is the southwest corner. So, it'll be down in, if you take a look up on the screen, it's really what we're referring to as the practice field, up in Lot N, upper left-hand corner of the screen, where you'll see Lot N, and then you see a practice field, that's the actual site. That's what we call it, into the real practice field. So, that is the proposed site of these townhomes. So, I know, everybody understands where on the campus we're proposing these.
Where are the modular units you're talking about?
Modular units are Building six, nineteen, and twenty-four. And in fact, twenty-four is no longer a residence hall. It is actually an administrative building, our health services and our constant services in twenty-four. So, in fact, we've already taken twenty-four beds offline. So, it is, again, nineteen, six, and twenty-four. What happens is, you know, with any, you know, evolution of, of housing on college campuses, for, for some of us who might have went to college thirty and forty years ago, is the traditional double-loaded corridor, common bath configuration is really not what distant generations looking for. They're really looking for townhouses and apartments and things like that. So, it's really just an evolution of our, of our housing. So, we will be replacing some buildings, that's the plan.
Okay.
I'm gonna now, there's no more questions for me, I would like to turn it over to my engineer, so he can actually go over the site.
Can I speak to this over here? So, for the record, Pete Parent, professional engineer with C H A. A little bit of administrative thing, Bill, here are the green cards-
Okay.
And notices.
Thank you.
So, this is the overall site plan, Center Road, tier, existing practice field, tier, Lot N, tier. Intent is to reconfigure the driveway, Lot N slightly, create a new driveway, to lead up to the parking areas associated with these two new buildings, okay, the two townhomes.
Sorry, can't hear you, can you just speak up?
Oh, sure. So, the intent is to reconfigure the, the driveway, Lot N slightly, then bring a driveway up this side of, side of this slope, create a new parking area, and, you know, building these two new townhomes on the already relatively level area that is the practice. And then, on the, on the side slope here, we'll be installing our detention water quality basin that will handle all the stormwater flows from this side. Either the rain drainage lines, okay.
Did you any screen?
Like, sheet C three point two is probably, yeah, yeah, two point two, two.
Okay.
So, this is just a little bit more detail of the site, you know, the two buildings kind of face each other across a grassed quad area. The parking consists alongside on the east end side. As Bill mentioned, we're proposing fifteen new parking spaces for which are barrier-free to service these buildings. There's additional parking throughout the campus, I believe there's over nine hundred and sixty spots currently. And then, you know, this long, skinny stormwater basin will handle all the storm flows from the roof and the paved areas here, and the paved areas in the parking lot. We'll also be bringing utilities up the drive, water, gas, and sewer already available in Center Road, so bringing those utilities up to service the building as well. So, there'll be no new on-site wells, no septic system, all that sort of stuff is already handled, we just stole utilities. That, that's the general sense of what is proposed?
What road would the new driveway be coming on, Center Road?
So, there's, there's an existing drive on Center Road that leads up to the existing residence hall, Covenheimer Hall. This is Lot N, which is at the end of that drive. The driveway for these buildings will be coming off of Lot N, so it'll eventually lead out to Center Road, but there's no new driveway proposed onto a town road.
So, you said that you were thinking of putting the townhouses on the, the practice field? But then you also said that's already fairly level. So, I'm confused, because the practice field that I understand is very, very elevated. It, it goes way up, so were you saying that that's not the practice field? You're gonna put it on the other side of that?
So, the, the practice field itself sits, sits up on top of the hill? But the practice field itself is a relatively low area.
So, what's gonna happen to that big elevated area?
That, that mound is essentially going to stay, you know, so the-
And it's gonna stay wide open?
Well, so, it's gonna stay, and we're gonna build the building down.
No, yeah, but, so that's my concern. If you're gonna build a building up on an elevated area, there's gonna be a considerable amount of runoff, and I think that's probably against conservation rules, because you can't really build something up high and then let water, sewage, showers, toilets, everything else just run off. And, you know, how are you gonna put something up so high and not?
Kids, uh, let me, let me explain a few things then. So, there's a municipal sewer out in Center Road and up to the existing dormitory. We're gonna be extending that municipal sewer up to service these buildings. So, the, the sanitary waste, you know, shower waters, toilets, that sort of thing, will go into that sanitary waste and be transported to this, you know, cities or the towns, municipal storm, you know, wastewater treatment facility. So, that water won't be running off the site, it'll be going to a treatment facility to be dealt with and-
And those plans are where?
So, that is, if you wanna go to sheet three point two, still?
Three point two?
Yep.
And you're saying that this is Phase one, and that there are additional phases coming after that? Where are you gonna be putting the additional phases?
So, the, the, the additional phases are currently just kind of like ideas at this point?
Pete, you want me to ju-?
Yeah.
Currently, they're, they're literally a concept. There isn't-
Say that again.
They're a concept. Again, we've eventually got to replace some older buildings. The goal is to ultimately add a few more up there, but I, there's no plans, there's no funding. The goal is to ultimately add a few more up there, but I, we, there's no plans, there's no funding, I can't, I, I can't sit here and even tell you that.
Speculate.
It, what's that?
Another, two townhouses?
These are two.
Another, no, on top of that.
Yeah, there'd be a couple more, yeah.
Alright, so potentially another hundred people.
Potentially.
And what about all the other dorms that you're taking down, why can't you repurpose that land?
Because this is the site that we've chosen, and we think it's best for the college and this facility.
But it might not be best for the people, it might be best for the college, but it might not be in the best interest of the abutters.
I, I, I appreciate that, and I understand that, um, but?
How many stories of these buildings could it be?
Two.
What's the elevation?
There are?
Exact.
I don't know, I'd have to?
Exact elevation?
Pete, do you have the architectural, sir?
What's the timeframe of the first, you know, on the first phase for two buildings?
We would like to break, break ground either later this fall or the spring. That it really all depends on fundraising and, and conditions.
Well, it was very well in doubt, so, money aside, what kind of timeframe, what kind of construction for the people who live right in that area can we expect?
Spring through the summer?
Okay, so that's it?
It's gonna be?
Yeah.
Eight months?
If, if I, if I, if I can break ground, if I can break ground this fall and get foundations in, it, these things will be occupied in the fall of twenty-three.
Alright, so I've, I've, I've seen twenty-four going, so all those people who are living in twenty-four are now going back up to the, the practice field. There's gonna be any sort of sound difference between twenty-four and the practice field, it's gonna be resonating downhill.
Just say that, tw- twenty-four is no longer a residence hall?
I understand that, I understand.
It has not been a residence hall for probably four years.
Alright.
Okay, so they're out?
So, that's an, so that's a, so that's really a, a unusual, unusual repurposing, that you're saying we're moving beds from twenty-four to practice field?
Yes, it's a, it's a, it's an office building. Okay.
I understand.
That was returns. So?
It went from a dormitory to an office building? You have that many offices?
There, we have some needs, yes. Um, the, the plan really is, it's not like, we, we are going to take beds out of a number of these buildings, okay? Not one in particular, and literally transfer them, which, which we don't need. Right now, the capacity of the college is about a thousand and five beds, that's what we have on the campus, okay? Right now, our enrollment for the fall on campus is projected to be about seven fifty. So, we still have room to grow, and that's clearly our desire, is to fill those beds, those open beds. Um, and we feel that, from a strategic standpoint, we know we've got some buildings that need to be replaced, and we know the desire of us students would be rather in townhouses than in what I would refer to as the traditional health supply power, of course. So, that's exactly what we're doing. And eventually, once I get enough up here, I will, we will, the plan is to take these completely offline. But in the interim, we will move the beds, we will not increase beds on campus.
What do you mean by eventually, when I get enough up here, what is enough up here?
Enough to, to, to phase these out, probably one more phase.
So, maximum, so you're thinking at least two now, and you're looking at at least two more, and it could be potentially more?
It, it all depends, it, it's impossible, but I, I don't have any plans, I don't wanna mislead you.
So, we're looking at these huge structures built up all over on the side of the, the?
Sorry.
So, we're looking at these huge structures all filling in that whole open side of the camp?
They're, they're two-story, they're two-studied, they're two-story, they're traditional townhouses.
Two-story.
So, we're not really two-studied.
Is there any possibility of lowering them at all, taking out some of that land to drop them to a normal level, so that they're not cutting off everyone's view?
It would just, and that would be cost prohibitive to, to take up that whole?
Well, there's two sides, there's two, you know, there's two parties here. It might be cost prohibitive, but what about the abutters? You know, you're not, you're pretty much doing everything that you want and meeting your needs, but you're not really thinking about anyone else that have been part of this town for prop- a lot of families as long as Nichols.
Well, I, 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 we believe that, you know, we're, we're not putting up a, a four-story large complex, we're, we're, we're putting up townhomes. But we, we do believe that, that they, if they fit the, the area and that, that, we don't think they are obtrusive, as opposed to a large, you know, eight, ninety-person doctor, like we have down in southern areas. That's the reason we have them.
Did you know how you, exact height?
Would you scroll the architectural design, Bill?
Okay.
Yeah, so it should be some elevations at four points.
Maybe a little extra elevation.
There. So, the peak of the roof to the ground level is thirty-five feet.
Thank you.
Um, last time you built up, when you built the parking lot?
Which one?
When you built the parking lot, your J K Hall, that new parking lot?
Yeah.
Um, had to watch down into ourselves. Our, our, yeah, our lawn was a mess, our, it ran down into ourselves. Nichols did clean it up, but it should not be happening.
And still, an enormous amount of water comes down, goes off onto Healy Road and all the trilliron, and you have an ice floe on that, or the, the hillside, from, from runoff, and that's always since you put in that parking lot.
Well, wasn't willing to look at that.
I think your partner said, I wasn't willing to look at that. And it's been going on for years, and nobody looks at it.
Your town, your town comes up every storm, because the ice is halfway across the road, on Healy Road. Someone's gonna get killed because of the runoff.
And nobody even, you're putting those, six now, six dorms, at the top of a very steep hill. And where is all that, how many acres of parking lots you plan to have by the time you get six of those townhouses up there?
So, the, the, the parking area is here.
How many acres is that?
Uh, it's probably about a half to three-quarters of an acre, and there's only a fifteen parking spot.
Three quarters of an acre times three. So, and where is that, is that to the west of the building?
That's to the east of the building, so that's to the Center Road side of the buildings.
That's to the central way, so?
Yeah.
What is, what is that that's further?
So, this is our, our stormwater basin, so that's where all the, the flows from the roofs in that parking area are gonna be collected, discharged here, and that will control the peak rate of runoff, so the, how fast the water is leaving.
Is that a detention or a retention?
It's a detention basin with some retention.
It only slows it down for a split second.
It's a detention pond with retention capacity. So, it has retention capacity for the water quality volume, but then we're just matching peak rates of runoff. So, this existing site generates runoff that reaches the neighbors in Center Road. We are matching that rate of runoff from this site into the Center Road drainage system. But we are capturing all the water that used to flow from the center part of this field down across those neighboring properties into Center Road. We are not going to be capturing that runoff with this basin and piping it into the Center Road drainage system. So, these lots that directly above the development should notice at least the same amount of runoff, if not a decrease in the amount of runoff that they're seeing from off of their sites, onto their properties.
What about the runoff to the west?
To the west, we're, we're doing something very similar. So, we've got drainage system within the site that's collecting our runoff, and we've got, our site's graded into itself. So, this is higher than the center, we've got drainage structures in the center. So, the center line is basically the existing high point, and we're capturing a small amount of that water and pushing it towards the east that used to flow to the west. So, we're reducing flows to the west as well.
But you're increasing flow to the east?
We're, we're increasing volume to the east, but we're not increasing rate.
What is the difference between volume and you're increasing the amount of water that will go?
So, think about it this way, you turn your tap on at home. Yeah, how far you push the lever up determines how fast the water comes out. We, that's what we're matching, how fast that water comes out. Now, you might leave that tap on for two seconds and get a certain volume of water, you leave it on for three seconds, you get more. But the same volume, the same rate of water that's going out of your faucet into your drain is what we're matching. So, that keeps the capacity of the drainage system, so, as it's flowing down.
Amount or flow?
So, we're matching rate, which is flow.
So, you're gonna have a greater amount over a longer period of time, is that correct?
We're gonna have the same rate over a longer period of time, correct.
And the longer that water is flowing over land, the more erosion happens.
But it, it won't be flowing over land, it'll be being piped into the municipal drainage system. That's the intent of this basin and where it's positioned.
Into the east, and what about to the west?
To the west, we're reducing both the peak rate of runoff and the total volume to the west, because we're capturing area that used to flow to the west, and we're pushing it to the east.
Where will that water flow to the west, or it will flow to the east now?
So, yeah, so what we're capturing that used to flow to the west will now flow to the east into this basin.
And what do you mean by the municipal drainage system?
So, the townhome system in Center Road.
Storm drains. Storm drains.
Storm drains?
Yes.
That is current.
And the storm drains go somewhere, where do the storm drains go?
The storm drains discharge to an outlet, usually to a larger order stream, but that's where we're matching the peak rate of runoff, so that a stream that has a much larger drainage area is gonna have a much higher peak rate of runoff than what we could generate from this area. And that's the intent of the state's regulations that we match peak rates of runoff, so that when they get to that ultimate discharge point, we're not increasing the rate of runoff, so that we're not increasing erosive velocities within these larger channels.
So, you're gonna be directing water toward the drainage crease, is that it?
No, we're, we're piping it right into the system, we're not directing it to the gutter line of the road, we're piping it directly into the system.
Or can I assure you that doesn't happen on Healy Road?
I, I can't speak to that, I, I wasn't in the design engineer.
Mister, is it I ask, are we gonna get a chance to speak when they're done?
Yes.
Yeah. Does, does anyone on that commission have a, a question, comments, concerns?
Your, um, retention and the, uh, retention, detention basin, whatever you wanna call it there?
Yeah.
Where, if that was to overflow, where would it go?
So, if it were to overflow, it would overflow onto the neighboring properties, maybe. Um, but per, you know, Massachusetts requirements, um, that is designed to have a foot of freeboard, so open space above the water surface to the top of berm in a hundred-year storm event.
Whi- which way does that opening go? That little gully there with the rocks?
No, 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 so there, there's no, there's no, um, emergency overflow here.
There's no skull lane, no?
It's just a, a flat berm.
Just flat?
And the hun- is the water surface that's expected in that basin during a peak of a hundred-year storm, that berm is a foot above that.
So, if we got a five-hundred-year storm, it could overflow?
It could overflow.
Could overflow.
And who are the abutters that that would affect?
You could go to the, who else I find?
Should be here.
Uh, C one, one zero.
So, it could potentially affect, uh, these two properties?
What's the names?
So, dynamic and? I don't wanna brutalize your last names, but what, can you, I'm comparing that?
I can't, I can't even read it. Ross and Suzanne, Mark and Anna, Stefanic, are they all here, is everybody here?
Yeah.
Ross isn't here, still in my pocket.
Still in my pocket.
Okay. And where that water's, the, the top of that berm that you were talking about, that's one foot higher than the hundred-year storm, how?
Yeah.
How high is that above their property right now, it looks like it's quite a bit up?
Yeah, so the, the existing gray at the property line is roughly six thirty-five, and the top of the berm is at six forty-four, so it's about nine feet higher than the property line.
Okay.
And how far from the property line? Uh, I have the scale, but I, it appears to be about thirty to forty feet.
So, if I understand that correctly, are we saying that a five-hundred-year event would be, would have to be watered ten feet deep?
No, no, so the, the bottom of this basin is at six thirty-eight, so the basin itself is six to seven feet deep.
Okay.
But it just happens that the berm is nine feet higher, this is a very steep slope.
We're still talking about a five-hundred-year event, is a, is a, is a huge flood?
It's a catastrophe.
Yeah, we, we didn't analyze a five-hundred-year event, so I can't, I can't speak to that.
And, and what's the, what's the, what's the basin made out of, is this, is this just, um, earth?
It's a grassed, you know, basin.
It's earth and grass?
Yeah.
And if it's that steep of a slope, how are you gonna maintain it, just let the grass grow?
Uh, so this, this is a three-to-one slope, um, so it is maintainable with, you know, and over the rail mower, or wheel lackers, or push mowers, that sort of thing.
Okay.
We have very similar ones on campus, but we already made.
Are any parks, are anything down on that hole?
We did do a, a series of test pits around, um, to determine how warm water, obviously, you know, we're on top of the hill, we didn't expect to find high ground, or we did find some restrictive soils, um?
No ledge or bedrock or anything?
No ledge here, no. Um, some, some very tight soils up here, um, as anticipated, you know, it was, obviously, the, the top of that hill had been flattened to create that, that field, so we were down into some glacial till soils pretty quickly there, but as we got to the side slope, we found better soils here, to kind of increase the ability to potentially infiltrate some runoff. But we, we did not include any infiltration in our design as a matter of being a little bit conservative.
Like, so your bottom of your pit is at, what, six, six forty-five on your telegraphy?
Yeah, so the existing, existing is six forty-five, and we're down to about six thirty-eight there, so?
The top of the berm is that four? You're down to six thirty. And we don't have a stormwater thing from Graves Engineering, is that what he wanted?
That is.
Stormwater movement, to get ready and then before. There's stormwater study, uh, completion on master, L T stormwater, any standards?
Yeah, so we had some comments, uh, from our consulting town engineer, I think, uh, item eight and item ten. So, um, Bill, this, um, stamped and signed drainage report and stormwater checklist provided, does that, has that gotten back to Graves Engineering yet?
Yes, Graves did review the stormwater plan and had some minor comments, but basically felt that it met, uh, state stormwater standards.
Alright, okay, so, do we have a second letter from them, or just the first?
Uh, we had the first letter from Graves, and then he responded to that and addressed those concerns, but I don't have a, a follow-up letter from Graves yet.
We don't have that yet, okay. In your submission, do you have anything as far as, uh, a lighting, proposed lighting?
Yes.
For the site?
Lighting, fire lanes, all of that?
You could go to the end of this civil drawing, so, like, sheet five point two should be the last civil drawing, and then delay photometric management there. There we go.
Okay.
Uh, so this is the proposed photometric plant, um, you know, clearly the lighting along the proposed drive, um, and all, you know, full cutoff fixtures, zeroed out at the property line, um, as is typical.
So, all downlighting?
Yes.
Is there lighting on the buildings too?
There will be lighting on the buildings, um, that is not analyzed here, uh, much further away from the property line. But it'll be limited to, you know, building code, E R S lights, that sort of.
And earlier you said fifteen parking spots with four that are handicapped accessible?
Yes.
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
Excuse me, uh, uh, the audio's been a little spotty, but, are any provisions for E D, uh, charging stations here?
There's currently nothing, uh, proposed, no.
Is there any charging stations on campus?
No, not at this time.
Not at this time. Mister Clark, did you hear that, there's none on campus at this time?
There are none, yeah, that, that was a little dis- disheartening, I, I would have hoped that, uh, Nichols would be in the forefront in terms of providing that kind of, uh, availability for their students. I know we've got bicycle parking spaces, I suspect that that might be the next step, and I think that you're gonna find a lot more vehicles on campus. And I think that you're gonna find a lot more vehicles on campus than you're gonna find bicycles.
We are having discussions. We have our first two EVs on campus.
I'm sorry, the audio's cracking up.
Yeah, we are having discussions. We have two. We have none of the student population. We have two faculty members that are not ever.
All right, well, this seems like an opportunity to maybe add a few more.
Those, there are none of the student populations, never come.
Any other questions from the board members before we open it up to the public?
Yeah, snow removal. Where are you guys putting, push all that?
Oh, yeah, so currently, you know, the end of the parking lot here is gonna be an open area. So that's how it should place.
Could you stand to help with the parking lot with that, Lee?
The south end.
And there's a catch base in there or is it just gonna be?
There's no catch base in there. That would drain into that stormwater.
Be a country style drain.
So any water that, any sheet flow off into the detention basin, basically?
And the other parking lot? I just got me pushed off the back of that door.
Uh, Bob can probably speak more to how they handle the snow in that existing parking lot, but.
In Lot N, we have a couple of storage areas.
Yeah, it's in the sand.
Yeah. Where we keep the stuff.
And nothing's changing there?
No.
There's no erosion or nothing on the back from the snow?
No. Try to keep most of the parking lots open. It melts and most of the catch bases.
Well, you're moving the sand and salt, so there are things moving around.
Yeah, the sand, yes, because it's in the way, that's correct.
And there's a barn up in that region, is that structure impacting at all? Am I on the right end of that parking lot? That's where the new driveway's gonna be, cutting in the access road, behind the barn, existing barn, which used to be a farm.
There is, if I remember, there is a barn on the Turkey property?
Yes.
That you may be referring to. We're behind that on property.
Yes, so that's not impacted at all, that barn is. But you're cutting the driveway just beyond that on the property line, if I understand you correctly?
That is correct, just west.
Now, now, when you cut the road in, it's gonna be, you said, a fairly maintaining a certain elevation, but it still seems that practice field is approximately fifteen to twenty feet from the parking lot. In elevation, so you're gonna put a building up to twenty feet in here, the foundations. The existing parking lot in.
This existing parking lot is around six forty-two, six forty-three.
What is the practice field height?
The existing practice field is at six fifty-four. Um, and that's essentially, yeah, twelve feet, thirteen feet up.
So that's the ramps that go down, going into the building, this least decline, but handicapped and what happened?
No, no, so this whole area is gonna be essentially level at that six fifty-four elevation.
Yes, but I'm asking the access road that you're cutting in.
Right, so this road will be at eight to ten percent from Lot N up. But once we get up here, this whole area is going to be relatively flat. So you've got the relatively flat area of Lot N, we'll have a ramp driveway, and then we'll have a relatively flat area where the building's, the parking lot's in.
How wide is your road?
This is a twenty-four-foot.
That's twenty-four?
Yep.
What berms?
Wood, wood curb, yep.
Yeah, wood curb.
Mister Chairman, I got a email today from the fire department.
Okay.
Paul Knessny, the assistant chief apologized for the tardiness of his response, but he did make it in in time.
Okay.
For the meeting. I can pass this around to the board members.
Okay, so I'll read what the, um, this was from the assistant fire chief. Uh, the site plan review for the proposed Nichols College Townhouse project. Dudley Fire Department has no objections to this project and have met with the campus facilities manager for a review. The following have been discussed and the fire department is accepting of all. Number one, proposed twenty-four-foot access road. Number two, proposed fire hydrant location. Number three, proposed discussion for fire alarm panel locations. Number four, proposed discussion for fire department connections. And number five, proposed discussion for knockbox locations. And this was from Paul Knessny, Assistant Dudley Fire Chief. Did we get anything from the police department?
Uh, I spoke briefly with the police chief. He had no objections to the site plan.
He had no objections, okay. Do we have any other comments from the board? Okay, so anybody from the public that would like to come up and ask some questions? If you come up to the desk and you sign in, you can ask your questions.
No waivers or nothing on this?
There's, there's no waivers requested, right?
Not that actually.
Waivers, nothing, all right.
Uh, I, one question I have, I just thought of, are you guys having a dumpster enclosure up there somewheres?
Yes, dumpster enclosure is located here.
Okay, so it's on the opposite end of the parking lot, the north side?
Yep.
And that's, that is an enclosed dumpster?
Yes.
Either fenced or walled or?
Fenced.
Okay.
Could I ask?
Hi.
Could I ask one more question?
If you wanna ask questions, you have to come up to the desk.
Hi, my name's Mark Stefanik. I live at ninety-three Center Road, which is adjacent to the, to the project. When I looked at the plans initially, I'm very concerned about the basin. The basin, the toe of the basin is right adjacent to our property line. I looked at the parking and the impacts of vehicles coming and going so close to our property line. The light pollution that's gonna come from the added streetlights to light the parking lot, the lights from the windows of the buildings. The berm itself that creates the basin is, is gonna block our western view out the back of our property. The buildings, top of the roofs are gonna be blocking the sunsets that we've enjoyed for thirty-five years living where we live. So I started to think about alternatives, if there's any other alternatives to citing this project on campus. My first thought was possibly next to the women's softball field. There's a piece of land there that's fairly flat, it's depressed. The buildings wouldn't be as noticeable because it's in a depressed area. I thought that might be a good site for a couple of townhouses. I also thought that moving the basin and the parking and the roadway to get to the parking on the western side of this project would be better for the residents along Center Road. I know that may create some problems for the residents on Healy Road, but, you know, I'm thinking myself at this point, you know. If that basin were on the other side, if the parking were on the other side, it wouldn't be as noticeable to us and I think it would help the residents in that area.
Is the property to the west all college-owned?
The property line?
Could you bring up the overall site plan with the first sheet, the sheet that's not of that?
Not all of this, yeah, I don't know.
They're just all the way to the front except for that first sheet, that overall map there. And so this, this property is owned by the Smith family and then this is Williams family above.
I mean, I have additional concerns about noise during construction. If the project were to go forward, trash control during construction, trash control after students move in. It's awfully windy up there, stuff blows in our yard all the time from the college and that's without these two townhouses and people living up there. You know, there's a lot of, that's a, that field is a wildlife corridor as well. I mean, we see deer in the back there all the time. We've seen bobcat. There's all kinds of wildlife that travels through there in the evening and that's, that's gonna be impacted by this construction and, and so I just want to voice those concerns.
So the question I would have is the existing parking lot that's up there now, is that tied into municipal stormwater?
So a portion of this existing parking lot does drain down the driveway next to this arrow. But about half of it discharges through existing stormwater basin here in the northeast corner. That discharge is further out, but essentially all of the drainage on the campus eventually makes it into municipal stormwater system.
So I guess my question would be if you did something similar to what he just asked, would it be, would it be possible to put that detention basin on the west side of the project and still have it drain down the driveway?
Um, it would something that we'd have to look at from a design perspective, but just offhand, I don't think that there would be anything that would prevent it from a purely engineering standpoint. Yeah, there would obviously be some cost considerations, you know, we're bringing this here now. All that pipe work is longer and deeper and further away and, you know.
Right, but you don't have two abutters that if there's a five-hundred-year storm, they're gonna have a catastrophic failure?
We don't know that there's gonna be a catastrophic failure if there's a five-hundred-year storm because we didn't analyze a five-hundred-year storm.
Well, we had a five-hundred-year storm last August in Dudley.
Okay.
So.
So just one more question. If, if the basin were to go where you show it now, you said that the top of that berm is nine feet?
Correct.
So that's creating a slope. And when we get a really heavy rain, the velocity of that water's gonna come down that slope and it's gonna come right into our backyard. There's nothing to stop that water from running into our yard once it hits the slope of that basin. That's a concern I have as well.
Right, so from, from the top of that slope to your property line, correct. That, that water will continue to discharge onto your property?
At a higher velocity because you've created a slope that's not there now.
But it'll be a much smaller volume because we're now taking all this area that used to drain to your yard and we're capturing in the basin. So from a flow perspective, you, you should not, you should notice a reduction in flow onto your yard and also in velocity.
I'm not sure I agree with you. With the added slope, you're gonna have more velocity. Not as, a shorter area, but more velocity coming down that slope that's gonna end up in our yard. Right now, we don't get any water in our yard because the field is sloped gradually and it's heavily vegetated and Mother Nature takes care of it. You're disrupting all that now. You're changing all that and that water's gonna end up in our backyard along with the Durkys and our other neighbors as well.
At the parking lot at the top there with the fifteen spaces, are, what do you have? Do you have anything in the way of guardrails around those parking spots so that, you know, no cars can go off into the detention basin or down the hill?
We have barrier on the north side where there's a steep slope and a brick wall. But on this end, the shelf that we have behind the curb is such that there's no warrant for a guardrail there. The curb and the shelf is per Mass Highway sufficient to prevent anybody from. You'd have to be going, you'd have to be going thirty miles an hour to go over that and end up in the, based on, you know, Mass Highway perspective.
And, and that's not possible?
I'm sure it's possible, but we can't prevent everybody from, you know, harming themselves.
So I'd like to have someone else come up and speak, but just to summarize, my biggest concerns is would the college be interested in looking at an alternative site that's not so invasive for the residents? And if not, would they consider moving the basin and the parking and the access road to the opposite side of the project, the western side of the project? To keep it out of the residents' backyard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bottom corner of that detention pond, it looks like there's a retaining wall or a cushion or what is that, little squilly line?
That, that's the proposed, a little clearing there. We have the small area of trees we have to cut out.
Hello, my name is Sandra Smith and my husband is Thomas Smith and we own the piece of land that you pointed out there. My husband is a professor emeritus at Nichols College. He worked there for forty-two years. And we have lived either on campus or adjacent to campus for forty-seven years. So we know about any issues or, you know, anything like that. The concern that we have is the, I don't know as much about the water issues as Mark or as Gene Williams does. I don't know the technicalities. But I can tell you, you cannot imagine the water that comes off that hill during a storm. And I, I just think it's a unique situation. It's not, I think that the soil has clay in it or something. But I think that you have to be very cautious about the water plants. The other thing is our land where we live at our house is next to Shammy Hall. And when they built that, there is a law on the books in Dudley that you can't construct a residence more, closer than fifty feet to a property line. So Shammy Hall was built exactly fifty feet from our property. So I am wondering how far this would be from our property line, but I can see that it's more on the east and we're on the west. So I don't think that that's probably going to be a concern. The other concern I have is that my husband and I bought this property because we like nature, we like going up there, we walk up there a lot. And my husband, my son-in-law and my grandchildren hunt up there. They hunt for turkey and they hunt for deer. And you cannot shoot a gun within five hundred feet of a residence in Massachusetts unless you have permission. So we're quite concerned about the safety of the students because of hunting and we don't want to give that up. And you may, you may think, well, gee, they only have four acres, but we also hunt on the Williams's land too. So it does make for a nice area. And I certainly hope that you don't switch it to the western side because that would make all of these issues even worse. I'd like to speak as a resident on the western side of your project. The unfortunate fact is that Nichols College is built at.
Mister Chairman, could you identify yourself?
Yeah.
Could you identify yourself?
What's that?
Could you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, Gene Davis.
Okay.
And we are also the, of the Williams Farm. That is, we own property both on the north side of Healy Road, which abuts Nichols. We also own property on the south side of Healy Road, which doesn't directly abut Nichols, but anything that's put on the western side of that project, that water will run downhill and eventually will reach us. I think the past informs the future. And I would like to speak about our experience with a project which directly abuts our property to the north of Healy Road. We have an APR farm, agricultural preservation restriction farm, owned by my sisters and me. And we have dealt with the endless expansion of Nichols parking lots for many years. Prior to two thousand eight or two thousand nine, there were no site plan reviews required, so parking lots were paved willy-nilly with no regard to where the water was going. Finally, in two thousand nine, there was yet another expansion and there was a site plan review. At that time, we had an erosion ditch, two hundred feet by long, five hundred, five feet wide and two or three feet deep. We tried to stop that expansion. Now we have an erosion ditch, two hundred feet long.
We tried to stop that expansion, now we have an erosion ditch, 200 feet long, 15 feet wide, and 5 feet deep. That is with a so-called retention pond. An APR farm, but an APR farm, that means that the farmer sells the development rights. My father got a whopping $130 per acre for selling his development rights. The town pays 5% of that, and signs a document to protect the viability of the soil on the farm. Well, so this plan comes along, we tried to fight it, tried to convince the town that we already had ongoing erosion. The plan went through. We have, as I've just said, the erosion has continued, there's ongoing, constant erosion. We have that one erosion channel, we have several more that are forming, getting bigger every year. We have spent $60,000 on, on lawyers, on riprap, and on other solutions to try to prevent our soil from being eroded. By the time we heard about the expand, yet another expansion, and apparently there's gonna be two more expansions of this thing too. So there's gonna be, um, what, how many acre, there's gonna be 60 parking spaces there by the time they're done. By the time we heard about our, back in 2009, it had already been approved by the town. And by the time we were informed as abutters, no town official ever came to examine the already existing erosion. You know, on the western side of where the, the site they're planning, the hayfield on the western side, since that parking lot went in, cannot be cut unless it's a drought year like this year. So it's already affecting the envi, it's doing, it's doing environmental damage already. Just the present parking lot, God knows what that will do. Our land, which yes, is at the bottom of Healy Road on the south side, is far wetter than it has been, it's impassable except in a drought. The water runs downhill, and yes, it eventually gets to us. No town official, again, ever came in 2009 to check what the damage was. And this is from the, we had the, the, um, Natural Resources Conservation Service people come out. They said that the town of Dudley filed for an agricultural exemption in Bill, and that has determined that no review of drainage through the Williams property was warranted by the town. Now Dudley, we are the agricultural people. So how did they get an agricultural exemption? That's, that's... And I'm only re, I'm only rehashing all of this, because in our experience, we cannot depend upon Nichols College to prevent, to protect the environment of their, uh, around the abutters land. We cannot depend on them to do that. And as it turned out, we could not depend upon the town either, because the town got an illegal agricultural exemption to put in a parking lot for a college. How did that happen?
Do you have a copy of that letter?
What's that?
Do you have a copy of that letter?
I do.
Will you get a copy of that?
I will get one for you. So I would hope that you do not allow this, they have parking lot M. Put these things in parking lot M. Put them, tear down the old buildings and put these townhouses where the old buildings are. Don't continue environmental degradation of Dudley by just having them pave and pave and pave. That water is going to run off somewhere, and I don't know where you think the water is going from the present parking lot, but it's, it's running down Healy Road is where it's going, and forming an ice floe every winter. And I hope there's some protection for residents of Dudley from continued environmental degradation.
Okay, thank you.
It is unfortunate that Nichols is at the top of the hill. If it's the bottom of the hill, it would be a different story.
Anyone else like to speak?
Hello, we're the Rossens. My name is Jim Rossen, and this is my lovely wife Cynthia Rossen. And our concern, we own, um, over 20 acres that abut the southern side of the proposal. We purchased the land from a gentleman named Ray Sheldon, who was a true gentleman, who maintained a gentleman's farm. And we, uh, as a couple, walk the fields and have to concur with the previous speakers to say we fell in love with the wildlife. It is absolutely spectacular, the views in the land is just amazing. I also wanna concur with previous speakers, saying I have deep concerns with exactly everything that they said, from the lighting, the drainage, the total impact of sound, the quality of life for everybody that's abutting with said property. It will impact all the people who have been your good citizens, and who have been here for, my wife and I have been in town, uh, for more than three decades, and had hoped to have a gentleman's farm up there, but would be reluctant to jump in if this is gonna be just the building upon building, a bigger and bigger project. Again, just like what previous speakers had said. I also kind of step back and also have to agree with the zoning. I mean, I don't understand how zoning seems to fit for one set of shoes, but not for someone else. I mean, if I were to say, I wanna put in a housing project, would you just wave a green light for me and say, go ahead, Mr. Rossen, you can have and change the zoning, and you can put in as many houses as you want on your 20 acres? And could I, as an individual, say, damn, Nichols is getting a tie into the sewer and water, can I do the same? Would I have the same rights as Nichols? I would like that. I mean, at least I'd get some value out of that. And I also scratched my head that about, I don't know, six weeks ago, I got a phone call, and it was the town water department saying, you have to be concerned about the consumption in town. Everybody's gonna lay off the water. So I'm a little bit perplexed here as to, all of a sudden, we're gonna put in, you know, hydrants and 54 or 52 beds? And this is the first step of many projects to come. So I question all of that. I just don't understand how it's good for one and not for the other. Nichols is a private institution, okay, it's not a public. They are making money. So what's wrong with everybody else making money? I just don't understand. So I hope you folks can help clarify a few of my questions.
And I, I would like to, um, say something on, that I was thinking of in the last, um, the last person talking about the erosion and the water runoff, and it seems as though, I mean, I am certainly not an engineer, and I don't know, so I could be wrong, and I apologize if I am. But assuming that there is a problem, assuming that there is a lot of water running off into Center Road, into the Center Road area, into the catch basins, into the drainage system...
To Healy.
Into Healy Road, into all of these...
Network.
Networking neighborhoods around Nichols. If Nichols doesn't own the property, then they're not liable to clean up the mess. Every year, the town of Dudley falls short of funding. Every year, we need overrides, we need, um, town meetings, we need tax increases to support what we have now. What if there's a huge problem, and Nichols says, hey, it's not on our land, it's on town land? Is Dudley prepared for multimillion-dollar repairs? Should we have a 500,000 year, a 500-year storm? Like, looking at, looking down the road, yeah, this might be great right now, but what happens if there's a catastrophe? And, and Dudley has to pick up the tab? Can we afford it as a town? I don't know. I'm not on the planning board, I'm not on the finance board. I know I've supported every fire truck and every override since I've lived in this town. I've taught in this town for 40 years. I've given my blood, sweat, and tears to this town, and we love this town. But can we afford a potential disaster? If something goes badly wrong, and, and we have a problem, or there's ice in the road and a student flies down the road, the, the ice is on Town Road, and five kids get killed in a major car accident, and Dudley gets sued because of that overflow freezing? Can Dudley absorb a catastrophe? Do we have the slush fund to just pay for anything that could potentially happen down the road? That's like the mom and me thinking what could happen? Always thinking, what if, what if, always making sure there's extra, you know, toilet paper in the cupboard, and tissues in the closet, and diapers on the shelf. Does Dudley have the extra to support a problem? Because this is huge. Like, this isn't just an apartment building, this is huge. And it sounds like it's gonna get bigger. And does Dudley really wanna change the footprint that badly? Isn't there somewhere else you can put this, rather than wiping out one of the few really gorgeous areas we have left that makes us unique and special and beautiful? I mean, sometimes you just gotta go with your gut. You know, you gotta look at the numbers, but you gotta go with your gut too, so that's just a little bit of what I'm, of what I'm thinking. And again, I could be wrong, like I said, I'm not an engineer, but I'm talking as, like a person and as a mom, and saying, are we prepared for something that could go wrong? Because if it's not on their land, they're not gonna pay for it, I don't think. I mean, I can't see them stepping forward and saying, yeah, we need to re, we need to repave Center Road because it, it all just lifted and washed down. But you know what, we're, we're gonna just pay for it for you guys, because you were nice enough to let us build that. I don't know. You know, I, I don't know. You know, you've gotta sit back and say, if we go through with this, is Dudley prepared to pick up the slack if something happens? Or is that gonna fall on raising taxes to, to support something that happened from a private institution? It's a business, it's not a public school. It's a business, and it's, it's a business that's gen, here to generate money. They have 750 students, but they are building for 1,000. This is a marketing issue for Nichols College. Do we wanna, are we part of a marketing plan? Like, how's that gonna help Dudley? Like, we're here for Dudley, they're here for Nichols. And I'm not saying it's not a good school, we had three kids that went through school. I taught for 40 years, I am all about education. But this isn't, you know, this is like, this is a business, this is a marketing thing for Nichols. You know, how much is it worth to the town of Dudley to give Nichols 250 beds? What's Dudley gonna get out of it? Are we gonna get back what we're losing? And I guess that's the question, so, thank you.
Bill, I got one question for you. Um, this, they're saying that this, uh, project is in residential 15 and residential 87. Where is the zoning line on, do you have a ma, a map or a drawing with the zoning line?
Yes, so the, uh, the zone line... Here, should connect that, Chris? So this is, this is the line here that is the separation.
So what's Res 15 to the, to the, to the east is 15, and to the west is 87?
Majority of it is the 15, there's a small corner here that's 87.
What's the density requirement for Res 15?
Well, this is considered an educational use, so it's not considered a, a residential use.
Okay.
So this doesn't go through zoning?
So, and, and the zoning...
Or was that already done?
Excuse me?
It goes through ZBA, or is that already done?
The, uh, zoning allows educational uses by right in all districts in Dudley with site plan review, if it triggers certain thresholds. So this is a permitted use in town. And it's, the planning board has site plan review authority over this project to regulate things like, you know, erosion, drainage, parking access, that sort of thing.
So that gentleman's correct. College actually has a right that it does not have as a...
Correct.
But as, as a planning board in Dudley, do we have a right as a board to say, we don't think this is the right location for this particular project, and say no?
Site plan approval is not a discretionary permit. It allows you to review and require changes to the site layout to minimize impacts on the town and the neighborhood. But it's not a discretionary approval, whi, which you could deny. So it's a use allowed by right, but it gives you the authority to, to manage the project very carefully.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm thinking, the problem I see with this is, I don't, I don't see what, what requirements we could make to this existing plan, or changes we could require of this existing plan that would solve the issue. As we've already heard, one abutter suggested we, that the detention basin, retention basin be moved to the west side, but then we heard from the abutters on the west side that don't want it there, so that's not gonna be a...
How many, when, when this detention retention basin is, is, is full, let's say at 100-year capacity, you said you still have one foot of berm before it, it would, it would overflow. When this is at 100-year capacity, how many, how many gallons are we talking about retaining in that, in that pond? And my other question for you would be is, what's the elevation in front of that pond at Center Road?
So the, the total storage available in that pond, up to the very top of the berm, is a little over an acre foot, so 43,500 cubic feet of water. So an acre of land, a foot deep in water.
And so... Somebody got a phone that can calculate that in gallons?
Yeah, so call it 50,000 cubic feet times seven and a half, that's 40,000 gallons.
40,000 gallons of water. And the elevation of that water compared to the road, do you know that?
I don't know the elevation of the road offhand here, um, but it appears that it would probably be 25-ish feet above the road.
25 feet above the road.
But the vertical feet from that catch basin all the way down to Yummi, this must be what, 255, 300 feet?
Yeah, this is, this is a, a, a long hill, so you, that's, you know, I don't know offhand, but that's, that's impossible.
It's not just a hill, these are residences.
I know.
These are homes. I like the waters running down on, um, the hayfield with the slope. These are homes, and this water's gonna be heading towards...
To be clear, that, that water is not running over the properties. That water is piped into the drainage system at a controlled rate, that matches the existing rate of the water that flows off of this site into that drainage system.
Could I add a point about the west side? At the bottom of the west side is the Tufts Ranch Brook. The Tufts Ranch Brook flows through a tunnel under the Grand Trunk. That Grand Trunk tunnel is just barely hanging on. If we get your somehow, how many thousands of gallons of water into the, the Tufts Ranch Brook, and it heads for the, um, Grand Trunk, God knows what's going to happen. The whole thing could collapse.
The valley would become a lake.
Yeah, the valley would become a lake.
I already whipped rotating those buildings and putting that detention pond on the backside of that, towards the back.
You're saying putting it here, or putting it here?
Yeah, putting it where you had the finger first time.
Here.
Yeah, if you rotated that building towards that parking lot more.
I mean, essentially, it doesn't matter where, where we put the basin. The volume is gonna be the same, and it's still gonna be piped into the Center Road drainage system.
It looks like you got more of a flat area towards that back half. Or is that gonna be future expansion? Like, I was gonna say...
So if it was, if it was sitting here, we have the same...
You can rotate this way, if we, if you take the pond over here on the flat area.
Yeah, I mean, certainly that, that's...
But then you wanna be clear cut, the bottom of the pond. Might just be something to think about.
How many people on the planning board have traveled up Healy Road in the wintertime?
I can't remember.
Or down Healy Road? The highway department comes all the time to try to come up with some solution. Every time there's a storm or whatever, they come and there's something, they're trying to remove the ice. They're chipping, yeah, they, they're hours trying to fix this. And this basically, we were, we were.
The existing park.
We've lived there forty-six years. And this basically just real, I don't know how to use the word, it's got it, but it seems as though it has to have something to do with what Nichols is up. I mean, we had to dig a ditch on the side of our driveway so that we could at least get up. Our driveway, a thorough way up, it's solid ice. Very hard to get up in the winter time. And as a tech, you can check with the highway department and see what's been up to build in order to fix that.
Does anybody else from the public would like to speak?
You know, the one item I overlooked mentioning and no one else has mentioned is property values. With the college now surrounding, especially the three or four residences on Center Road, I, I can't see that as adding to our property values, that's only gonna make our property less valuable. And that's a concern that we have. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, anyone else wanna speak?
I, I don't know, there was a discussion between two of the gentlemen of the board. And I don't, and I don't under, I don't know if we understood it clear. It, it sounded as though this is like an unstoppable project. Is that the case or not? And if it is.
It sounds like it, it sounds like this is a formality, this is kinda like a.
It's just like a formality, that's what it sounded like with that discussion. And then secondly, if it does impact all our abiding property values.
Yes, by who, it's already been approved by what board?
It's, it's, as far as I know, it's, it hasn't been approved. What's been, what's been done is the, the legwork, I'm sure you've been to water and sewer and got permission for the water and sewer tie-ins.
Other, can other individuals get tying to the water and sewers? I thought there was a cap that we couldn't, and it was a serious concern with water capacity in this town. Am I misled on that?
That's up to water and sewage.
Yeah, but have, have we got any? Have they?
Have to ask them.
Do they understand the impact? I mean, it's not small.
I think what he's gonna explain to you is what, what he stated at the beginning. Their, their intent is not to increase the number of beds on campus. Their intent is to increase the, the type of bedrooms they have on campus. So that they're townhouses versus then dormitories.
Excuse me, I beg to differ because he said right now, we, he, according to them, they are looking to increase the number of beds on campus. They said, um, right now, we have, they have a capacity of a thousand and five beds with a seven hundred and fifty enrollment. So that means they don't really need these dorms because they have more beds than they have students by about two hundred and fifty.
The goal is to replace some of the older buildings.
So why don't we, so let's replace the older buildings where they already are and not change the footprint of the town and not invade other land because it seems like a waste. Why would you replace other buildings and leave them vacant? I mean, look at the town hall. We took an old building, look at where we are right now. You know, instead of wiping out the town, the school, Dudley Elementary School, and wiping it out and throwing it away brick by brick, we made it into a great municipal complex. Why can't they do the same thing? I don't understand why it has to be where it is. And I'm also cons- um, just another question, Mr. Smith said that when you, um, Mr. Horn, when you said, you know, what, do, do we have to approve this? I just wanna make sure, um, clarify, you said that the site plan was accepted, but the construction has not been approved. So technically, as a planning board, could you say no to this project?
For site plan review, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, it's our job to review the site plan and make sure it falls within our site plan rules and regulations.
Okay.
And that's like, things that we were asking about previously. Where is the dumpsters going? Are they gonna be enclosed? Where's the, what's the lighting plan for the site? Is it gonna impact the abutters?
Okay.
The drainage, the stormwater, obviously. I mean, I gotta say, I've been on the planning board almost twenty years. I have not seen a plan come before us like this. And I would not wanna be in a butter that has forty thousand gallons of water twenty-five feet above my property.
Thank you, thank you very much, sir, for acknowledging that and.
To expand on his answer to your question, where the problem arises is if an applicant, like in this case, comes forward before us and makes the application, if they follow all of the rules and regulations, if they meet all the stipulations in the current regulations, then if we refuse it, then we open up the town to a lawsuit.
Yeah.
Okay. So in some respects, this is a done deal?
No, I wouldn't say that.
They have the right to build it.
We can continue to try and kind of come up with ideas. Like one of the things I was just thinking about was I was wondering whether or not it would be feasible to reduce the size of that existing retention detention basin where it is right now and add a secondary one to the rear, to the west side of the property, maybe to, towards the rear there, kind of. Because you've mentioned that the water is being channeled, uh, on the west side there, that it's being channeled towards that middle drain there. You know, how much of that might be able to be reverted? Instead of bringing it to the center of the, the drain that you've located in the center of that courtyard between the two buildings? What if that was diverted back to the west to an, a secondary retention basin? Which would then allow you to reduce the size of the retention basin directly behind those butters? I'm just, just something I'm thinking about out loud, I don't know if it's even feasible or it makes any sense.
And the, and the other thing is, the one thing that I just wanna say is that, you know, all, all the people on this board are volunteers, we're elected officials, but we're, we're, we're laypeople, we're not professionals. So I mean, we, we can, we can say we don't like something, but, um, you know, we, the proposals that we're coming up with may or may not be feasible from an engineering standpoint.
Another thing to consider, you said that if the site plan meets all guidelines and it's acceptable to the state, you can't stop it, otherwise you become liable. Possibly, just another thought, you might become liable if there's things here that might affect the environment because then you'll be dealing with the EPA. So, you know, you also could be having, approving this could also have that kind of an impact as well.
We wouldn't necessarily be, be involved with that as a planning board or maybe even as the town of Dudley, but then it would be the college and the EPA.
Okay. I'm just thinking of anything I can think of that might help have everybody leaving this room feeling.
Better.
A little better than we all do right now.
I mean, I.
Cause it seems as though things that we've worked so hard our whole lives for are, are being ripped to shreds by people that, that, you know, that don't care about, you know, I mean, this is our livelihood, this is our property, this is our retirement, I mean, this is our whole future. And, you know, we're all here because we're fighting for something. We've worked really hard to achieve and to earn and to acquire. And so we are all passionate because this is our life, our livelihood and our homes. And they're being affected by a pub- private institution that's just trying to bring more students in and, and use our, our town and our area to market their school, to market their business. And, and that's ethically wrong, they might be able to do it legally, but ethically and morally it's wrong. It's, they're gonna gain and it's gonna be on our dime. And I do worry about the town of Dudley, I hope, I hope I don't have an override to have to think about ten years from now that says we have to rebuild Center Road because it washed away. Excuse me, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Mr. Clark, please, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, does the conservation board weigh in on this at any point? Or have they already?
Uh, the conservation agent, uh, sent me an opinion that he didn't have any problem with the site plan. I don't, don't know if it's been presented to the conservation commission for review yet.
He, but he has indicated that there, he sees no problem with this, is that what, is this true, Bill?
Correct. Yes.
And we have that in writing?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, did the conservation board meet and discuss this particular issue? And was there opportunity for the public to be there at that meeting?
We have not presented conservation as no wetlands on site or within a range.
So that was a no?
Yeah, Bill, the answer to your question, there's no wetlands on the site.
Okay, so there's, well, we've got forty thousand gallons of water, but we don't have any wetlands currently. Although someone just mentioned a hayfield, I think that was described as impassable, wasn't it?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, so, uh, I, I, I'm sure, it's, it sounds pretty wet to me.
What company will be doing the excavation?
Which company wi- with, do you know which company?
We haven't contracted with anyone yet.
Okay.
You guys are talking about adding another build in here? Is that pond gonna be bigger, that detention pond? Is that gonna dump inside?
The detention pond is, is currently designed to handle some expansion.
Some expansion.
And of all the, all the available property you have on campus, is this the only place you could put this project?
It's the most viable, yes. We've looked at softball, uh, but that's athletics, but those are athletic practice fields. This was an athletic practice field, but it's not in the athletic, so.
So switch it.
Yeah, why don't you flip lock, then?
Switch it.
Why can't you put the dorms down under the valley and let that water flow well where it naturally flows downhill? And put, uh, playing fields back on top where it's gonna be pure sunshine and not be down where the sun goes up and down? Could that be much more attractive as an athlete and as a student going on the campus?
When we.
And the residents are gonna be much more compliant, otherwise, although, we've seen what happens in the bottom of Yummies annually. It might just be even intensified at that point.
When we approved your two dormitories that you built, um, a few years back.
Which ones?
These were the two that are side by side and they have like a, a courtyard in between.
Yeah, Copper Beach one and two, right on Center Road.
Right, I believe that, that, when we, when we approved that plan, that there was originally planned for three dormitories there. The third one was never built.
That's correct.
Why couldn't these be built in that area?
Doesn't fit. These wouldn't fit with up, with the beds that we need to replace wouldn't fit.
So what, what, the third building that was supposed to go with the beds was that?
We never designed it, it was definitely gonna be smaller than those, but those, those beds right now, those buildings are, um, about sixty beds each. That, that, if we, when we originally looked at that back, that's gosh, you're going back oh eight, oh nine, um, that was much smaller than it was, it was to be just all dormitories. So we abandoned that cause it's a very tight site, it butts very closely back up to that parking lot. So we, we decided to abandon that back in oh eight, oh nine.
So you're telling me this is your only choice?
It's our best choice, yes. We did, we've, we've looked at it, I, there, there may appear to be a lot of land there, there really isn't. And I, I, I'm more than willing to, I, I hear the concerns about the, the catch basin. I don't know what the answers are, cause it, I'm not an engineer either. Um, this was the most viable site for us. I, I, I clearly appreciate and, and I hear what the neighbors have to say. This isn't, you know, I, I'd just be very candid, the, the landscape in higher ed is very challenging. And I know people seem to think Nichols is an extremely wealthy institution. But I can tell you right now, we had a thousand beds on campus, we have a thousand beds, we're permitted to have a thousand beds on campus. We currently have seven hundred and fifty. That's not the way that the college economically is, is designed, so it is very challenging. So we are trying to change the numbers, we are trying to get back up to what we're permitted. So I, I do appreciate the concern and I'm willing to take a look at it. But the reason we're doing this is the economics. It, it's a very challenging environment for the college right now.
What about parking law camp, that's everything?
Um, excuse me, um, you said you have how many beds right now?
We are permitted to have one thousand five beds on campus.
Well, how many beds do you have right now?
One thousand five.
You, no, you, you've, you're, you're contradicting yourself. You said that you have a capacity for a hun- you, right now you have one thousand five beds on campus. Right now, you have an enrollment of seven hundred and fifty students.
Residential.
Right, so you're, you have the beds, you don't have the students. Now, so if you are not wealthy like you say you are, and if your finances are somewhat strapped, why would you be spending all this money creating dorms for students you don't have?
Recruitment, it's a recruitment strategy.
But, but, but again, it's a recruitment tool, sir, but it's not a guarantee.
Turn the doubles in this equation.
So if, if you, so why don't you just, if you're, if money is tight and you're really looking at the best interest of the college and you wanna do this with the minimal impact and raising tuition as lo- as minimally as you can to do this, why don't you just put something where the site plan was already approved for a third dorm? Or revamp one of the existing things? It seems as though you're, this, I mean, I've managed only a household budget, but this isn't cost effective, it doesn't make sense. You're, you're building, y- you're trying, you're, you're two hundred and fifty short, you don't have the students. What do you need the dorms for? What happens if you build all these dorms and they still don't come? We're in a recession right now, there's a lot of kids taking a gap year. It's highly unlikely that any college next year is gonna soar to the levels that they are hoping. I mean, I, I think you should write it out, quite honestly. If I was on the board of directors at Nichols College, I'd say hold your jets, cool your jets, hold for a while, see what the heck's gonna happen after this inflation, live with what we've got, build where we can, save the money, do it minimally. And if things change and we're in a boom, then spend the money. Don't spend money you don't have because then we're all hurting. You could end up with a huge bill, you could end up with a huge deficit, and everybody here's property is probably gonna get cut in half. It's all lose, I, I don't see any gain, I, it just doesn't make sense. Especially where you don't even have your own numbers straight. Like you said, you have a hun- a thousand and five beds, you said you have seven hundred and fifty students. Then you turned it around and you said we have a hundred and five students and seven hundred and fifty beds. So I don't know if anybody else was paying attention, but I was, and I picked up on that. And, you know, the facts are the facts, but at least give them to us straight.
And I'll give them to you straight, there's one thousand and five beds on the campus. Our expected residential enrollment in the fall is to be seven fifty.
Okay, so.
That's the facts.
Okay.
If I did say one thousand and five.
Okay, and, all right, and I appreciate you clarifying that, but my point is, you don't need the beds right now. Why don't you wait and see if you need it? Why go, why put everybody through this if, if you don't need it? It, I wouldn't take a chance, if it was my, my budget? Uh, because you're Nichols and you're one school, honestly, sir, I'm just thinking about the viability of Nichols College. What about Providence College? What about Boston College? What about Wel- Wellesley? What about Regis? I mean, everybody would love to expand right now, but we're in a recession. A lot of these kids aren't gonna be able to afford college. You know, maybe you should just let the dust settle. You know, maybe this is all, you know, a little too much too soon. I'm just being honest.
Mister, uh, Mister Chairman, uh, through the chair, I'd just like to ask you again, how many, uh, how many beds are you gonna end up adding potentially with these two buildings?
These two buildings will have fifty-two beds, that'll be taken from the current inventory.
Fifty-two, fifty-two total, correct?
Correct.
Okay, you got three modulators, one of the modulators is currently already being used as administrative, correct?
Correct.
The two remaining modulators, how many beds total in those two modulators?
I forget exactly, I wanna say just under a hundred?
Okay.
I don't have the exact number.
Since you've got a surplus of beds right now because you're looking at anticipated seven hundred and fifty student enrollment and you've got a thousand and five beds on campus, why can't you raise the two buildings that are the two modulators right now that have a hundred beds in them and build your townhouses in that location?
After a thorough review of the campus and a strategic planning relative to higher ed and Nichols College, we made the decision that this is the best site for Nichols College.
Bill, could you pull up that map that shows the, all the buildings on the campus with the numbers?
Sure. Uh-oh. Not sure what happened. I think I ran out of power.
Okay, do you have a, do you have a charger here?
I do, I can go get it from, okay.
Can I ask a question about the conservation commission while, while we're grading this?
No.
Does the conservation commission approve the environmental impact on things? Does the conservation commission approve the environmental impact on things?
No, the, the, the way, the way these projects work is they're not supposed to impact the, they're not supposed to impact the environment. That's what they're, that's what part of this presentation is about. Their, their stormwater management is to make sure that any increase in flow or, correct me if I'm wrong, but any increase in flow or watershed is gonna be maintained and managed on the property site. It's not gonna be, it's not gonna be allowed to flow into the neighbors.
Okay, so what about, um, the environmental impact covers a lot of other things besides water. It covers the effect on animals, it covers the effect on the view, um, the countryside, all of those things. So is there ever an environmental impact assessed upon?
We have had environmental impacts done on, like, subdivisions, but not necessarily on a site plan, to my knowledge.
Wildlife.
Is that something we could request?
Yeah, you can request wildlife biologist study.
You could.
Yeah.
Um, you, you have your engineer here. Is there, I mean, you're, you're obviously hearing the, uh, the, the problems that the abutters are, are bringing up.
Yes.
Um, from an engineering standpoint, is there any other option for retaining or holding that water, not in the location?
Certainly, as, as we've mentioned, dividing the basin up is a potential. But then, you know, what seems like a positive sometimes becomes a negative, because now we've got a s- a steep slope on either side. Now we're disturbing both of those slopes in order to construct two basins instead of one. We're adding additional pipe, additional structures, additional things that need maintenance. Yes, so there, there, there are positives and negatives to, to both sides of that. Certainly, there's potential there, but it's, it's not a magic ball.
Right, but I mean, on the, on the west side, you're not, you're not exactly up against residential homes.
Correct.
But they're up against, they're up against the extreme, the steep slope, and a five hundred year storm, that's gonna flood the whole bridge rock. And there goes the Grand Trump.
On your detention pond, can I get a plastic barrier between that? Like, like the septic?
Plastic barrier between?
The residence and, like, the top of your-
Oh, so that-
Patched pond, you know what I mean?
Yep, so like an inline check-in kind of thing?
Yeah, uh, just so I don't have seepage going through.
That, that's certainly something that could be looked at, yeah.
The, the abutters that are here from Center Road, do they have, do you have town water and town sewer?
We have town water. We have, uh-
You have a septic system in your property? And how large is your lot?
Five eighths of an acre. Well, I know there's, so, all the buildings that were torn down, uh, one in particular on the corner of Ten Yard Road and Central Road. Would one of these townhouses fit on a lot of that size or something be designed to fit on that lot? And instead of having this new project built on the top of the hill, try to mix in some smaller buildings on existing property that you already own? That, that houses were torn down off.
Also, I believe, I've heard that, um, Nichols bought, um, Jersey's farmhouse and barn, and those will be razed and taken down. Can you wait and put that townhouse down where that farmhouse is now? That's on the main road. It's not up, up on the hill, but it's right on the road.
So where location are you talking about?
Where, where would that be?
Yeah, I just feel there are other options out there that haven't been explored. And, uh, that'd be less invasive to the residents.
So, the reason why I wanted to pull this up, uh, before the battery died was because, if I recall correctly, at the beginning of this discussion, the two modulators that are, you're saying eventually are gonna no longer be needed are number six and nineteen?
Yep.
And I don't understand exactly why this project, which is gonna take up this space right here, this practice field, why that literally can't fit right in there?
It, 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 it's not to scale. Just so you know, that, 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 that practice field right there's not to scale, right?
No. But there's a hundred, there's a hundred beds in these two buildings, you told me.
Correct, right.
And you're, you're building this and you're gonna put sixty beds in?
Fifty-two.
So fifty-two?
That's correct.
And you're telling me that this building-
But I also said that we were gonna expand up there, so I can't put that development down.
So this is all about-
Yeah, expansion.
The next phases.
That's the goal. I don't know that we're gonna get there. Uh, but yes, I'm, I'm being candid. That's, that's exactly what we're trying to do. It doesn't fit. That's a very steep slope coming down to building, where am I? Six. That's the ba- back half of Budley. That, there's not a lot of room there.
But you could put one of those two townhouses there.
Correct. That, that's possible. That, that's not necessarily the plan or the desire of the college.
Well, just get rid of tennis court, one of them. Move the tennis court up there. Which one?
It seems really obvious to me that this plan is designed in Nichols College's best interest, and they didn't give, they don't give a darn about the residences. People have lived here for forty years or longer. They're doing what's in their best interest. And, and if our property values drop or if we have water running off the property onto ours, that's, that's just part of the deal, I guess. You know, we just have to suck it up and deal with that. I don't think it's right.
I can tell you with the Colorado River running through our farm and every time there's heavy rain, they don't really care.
Comes down the Central Road.
Okay. Yeah, so, I'm gonna, I'm gonna- Um, if anybody, if anybody else wants to speak right now, I'll give you an opportunity, but, um, otherwise, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And then, I'm gonna pull the board and see what their, what their thoughts are.
Mister Chairman, I wonder if we would like to continue the hearing, let Nichols College, you know, assess what they've heard tonight and come back with-
And let our high, what is the word?
With some other changes that they might feel could address some of these concerns, but it's up to the board.
Would you be amenable to that? Would you be amenable? Yep, okay. So then we're gonna continue the public hearing, um, let Nichols College see if they can address some of the concerns that they've heard tonight. And then we'll have, we'll continue the public hearing. Would it be at our next meeting or in two, or in two weeks, or would it be in a month?
We need to discuss when that next meeting will be.
Right.
Normally-
We have one meeting.
We would meet second and fourth Wednesdays of the month, but we're on a summer schedule now.
Right.
So, this is the only meeting we have scheduled for July, but we had a meeting scheduled for the second, the fourth Wednesday of the month. Then in August, we decided to meet at the fourth Wednesday of the month, but we can change those meeting dates at your discretion.
I just, um, we are more than willing to go back. I'll take the concerns to the administration. But I would ask that if we're gonna extend it, can, can we not push it off? And I understand you guys just have some type of, like, summer schedules, you only meet once a month as opposed to twice a month.
Hmm.
I, I guess what I'm asking is the sooner we can come back for the sec- the follow-up meeting, I would request that, given that I'm willing to go back and meet.
You know, I think, I think you should, I think you should do it on your timeframe, not theirs, because you have people that are on vacation, and if you do wanna do your do- your due diligence, you should not be, have this rushed. I think you should stick to your regular schedule. They're guests at your forum.
Chairman, it's just very close.
I, but I feel as though you're, you deserve the respect of having your own timeframe. Anything judged quickly, sometimes you can go back and say, I would've, could've, should've. Let's not play Monday morning quarterback. Let's take the time we need to make the right decision. It's extremely impactful.
So generally, we find that two weeks between a meeting isn't enough time for a, a, a good revised plan to come back, so I was-
So I was thinking we had, we, we were gonna, we were gonna cancel the two meetings at the beginning of the month, but now I was thinking we should cancel the two meetings at the end of the month. So our next, so therefore, our next meeting would be the second Wednesday in August?
Yes.
Second Wednesday, the tenth, the tenth of August?
Yep. Right now, we have, do we have anything on the agenda for our, our August agenda?
No.
I'd rather do it before the twenty-fourth, because I don't know if I'll be here the twenty-fourth.
Right, so August tenth, does that work for everybody?
I'm not gonna be here the twenty-fourth, so I know I-
Huh?
I'm not gonna be here the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, I don't, I won't be here the end of that month.
Right, so we would do it on August tenth?
August tenth sounds good, or August third, but it's one, two. Two weeks and a half, where, yeah, we'll do August tenth. Clark?
Mister Clark, are you available on August tenth?
As far as I know, Mister Horn.
Okay. So we would, we would reconvene on August tenth, if that's okay with you?
August tenth.
For half hour?
Okay.
At seven fifteen?
Seven fifteen, same time.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure right now at this point on August tenth for me, but, yeah, it sounds like you're gonna have a quorum anyways.
Okay.
Will the abutters be notified by mail?
That we're giving you the notice now, so it, it'll be just, ex- ex- this meeting is extended to August tenth at seven fifteen, same room.
The abutters are not here, though. Just let them know.
Get the word out.
Yeah, or have them watch the meeting. It's gonna be on YouTube.
But the abutters that chose not to come tonight, they were notified, so it was their choice not to come.
We, we have all the green cards.
Now they've got another, now they've got another shot at coming. Hopefully, they'll care enough to come.
And they, and they can still speak, so, okay. Thank you.
I have a question for the engineer.
Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
We'll go one more day.
I got a question for the engineer. Is there any way you could change that from a hundred year storm to a five hundred year? Come up with those numbers? You said you hadn't done it.
We, we can run that analysis, um, but, you know, the state requirement is up to the hundred.
Yeah.
You know.
It just seems like every time you guys expand-
For the five hundred year storm, that's gonna get one and a half times that size, and then it's never gonna be full of water. So we're gonna des- design a bigger berm, deeper basin, that's gonna be more visually obtrusive. That's really only gonna function potentially, you know, twenty-two percent of the time.
Right.
Make a motion, do we need a motion to continue it to?
Do we, do we need a motion to continue?
Yes.
Okay, so can we?
I'll make a motion to continue to August tenth?
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Thank you, Mister Chairman.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor, roll call Mister Chinaki?
Aye.
Mister Clark?
Aye.
Dave Dergan, aye? Steve Watroba, aye.
Guy Horn, aye, sorry. Okay, so we have August tenth, seven fifteen. Thank you, gentlemen.
Pete, do you want this, uh, this back?
Yes, please.
Okay, Bill, we did get to some of the standard business. We took care of Pier Pond Estates. Was there anything else on Rocky Hill or? I have nothing to, nothing to, uh, report on Eisenhower Drive yet. Tobin Farms or Lyons Estates?
No, I don't have anything. We did, um, have some reports on a couple of the projects at the last meeting, and you asked me to ask the highway superintendent to follow up with those, and he did, and he's had conversations with those developers to try to keep those sites cleaner than they have been in, uh, in the past.
Okay, yeah, I, I noticed that the, uh, I did drive by the one that's, uh, I drove down, um, Lyons Estates, and it was pretty much what Jeff Walsh had found, so hopefully they cleaned that up. Um, number two, those inspections and actions associated with site plans, uh, we, we did extend the, um, the one for J D and D tonight, so they're covered. The other two that were on that list were Legacy Landing, but, um, and the solar field. Was there any, anything to report on those two projects?
No.
Okay. And anything on your planner's plate?
No.
Uh, comments from the planning board?
Mister Chairman, if I may, uh, just a welcome to Mister Dergan. Uh, look forward to meeting him in person.
Yeah, welcome.
Uh, obviously, uh, looks like he's got his feet wet to see him.
Thank you, Richard.
And I don't think we're gonna have any comments from the audience. They just all left.
We got one.
Oh, she's an employee. And, um, other business, so we're gonna change that next meeting to August tenth for, in the other business at seven o'clock. Do we have any approvals or vouchers that need to be approved?
Yes, um, I believe you had one in your binder for Stonebridge Press, two hundred and ninety-four dollars for, uh, legal ad for this hearing that we just had. Uh, and I also just got some invoices, some Graves Engineering in just before this meeting. Sorry, I didn't make copy, sorry, but I, I can't tell you what they are.
Okay.
Um, for the peer review of the Nichols College site plan, one thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars for the site visit report that you reviewed last meeting for the Oxford Ave Solar, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-three cents. For the Lyons Estates, uh, site visit, two hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents. And for the Country Club Acres, site visit, two hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Um, so, we can vote them all at once, right?
Yes.
Because you're gonna, you're gonna approve them anyways. We're just giving you the permission to approve.
Yes.
So would somebody like to make a motion that we, uh, we, we allow the town planner to, um, pay all the vouchers for Graves Engineering, the four that he just read off, and then we also have this one here from Stonebridge Prej- Stonebridge Press for two hundred and ninety-four dollars?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Uh, roll call vote, Mister Chinaki?
Yeah, aye.
Mister Dergan?
Aye.
Mister Watroba?
Aye.
Mister Clark?
Aye.
And myself, Guy Horn, aye. Okay, and back to that. Second page. Um, other town hall, other town notices, nothing?
I just found out today that the town, uh, is getting a hundred thousand dollars for the design of the bridge on Mill Street, which flows from Low Pond under the, under Mill Street and then goes below the Stevens Mill.
Okay.
So, a hundred thousand dollars for the design of that, uh, mill, uh, rehabilitation, that bridge rehabilitation.
Okay, and that, could that be done in conjunction with the, with the-
Mill Street.
With the mill, um, with the relaying out of their parking lot and their entrances and stuff like that, or is that, would be a separate project?
I think when we do, so this award is for the design of that bridge, which does affect the mill, so I think there needs to be some coordination with the engineers of the Stevens Mill.
To make it work.
Yeah, so that there's no-
Can they widen that road if they're gonna bridge?
Um, it's not enough room there, I think. You know, there's a guardrail, there's a narrow sidewalk, and then the, the mill. It's in front of the, um, uh, agency, the social service agency there, so.
Okay.
Um.
But it's something that they would wanna know about.
Yes.
So, okay. Uh, any other correspondence?
No.
Yep, okay, and we now know that the next meeting will be August tenth, seven P M.
How about the Hill Street?
Chairman, if we move this, is that in order? Would be, uh, Jordan?
Uh, Tom just had a question. Uh, which bridge was that, Tom?
Hill Street or?
The one that goes over the French River?
Yeah.
The Mill, the Mill Race. So, um-
Is there any word on when they're gonna do that?
We've been, so the, that bridge was ordered closed by Mass D O T.
Right.
And we've been working with our bridge engineer from Ty and Bond to try to figure out what's the best solution for that.
I thought that was the one that they were gonna, I mean, Corps of Engineers was gonna give a temporary bridge, and they were gonna set it up, and then they could tear the old one down and rebuild it.
That's the current plan. The, the thought is to demolish the existing bridge first as one phase, and then that would allow the engineers to really assess the conditions underneath, to do the design. The abutments need to be reinforced and that kinda thing, and it needs to be integrated with the other bridge on the, over the French River. So, but I think if we can get that bridge taken down, that would really expedite the next phase, which is the design of the temporary bridge.
Okay, is that half Dudley, half Webster?
The bridge that's closed is the Dudley Bridge. The other bridge over the French River, I'm not sure where. I think that's a state bridge.
Okay. All right, so anything else? Okay.
Uh, Mister Chairman, if I may, uh, to the town planner.
Sure.
Uh, you know, I, I understand you just gave us a little information with the guys with the bridge, but I think the question that's up close to the residents' mind is when? You know, is there a timetable? Has somebody got a date, an end date for this thing? You know, is there a timetable? Somebody got a date, an end date for this thing?
Well, I, I think the demolition portion of that project can happen fairly quickly. The other, the, the construction of the temporary bridge is a money issue. So as soon as we can get the funding for that, then that could proceed, I think, fairly quickly, but I don't have an exact timeframe.
So effectively, there is no date. In other words, somebody cannot look at their calendar and say, I should be able to drive over that bridge on such and such a date.
That's correct.
Okay, I think that's gonna be disappointing for those who might be viewing this on YouTube later today.
People view this?
Well, yeah.
Ten people.
Yeah, well, if you looked at network television, you'll see there's other options out there. We don't have commercials, so we're ahead of the game.
So we're working out as quickly as we can.
Maybe we should put commercials in. They can pass.
Why not? That's a good idea. We could be a four-proctor organization.
Okay, so would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I would like to, I'd like to make a motion to re-adjourn, Mister Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion from Mister Clark. Do we have a second?
Oh, we'll second that.
Mister Chinaki, second it. Okay, roll call, vote. All in favor, Mister Chinaki?
Aye.
Mister Dergan?
Aye.
Mister Wetruba?
Aye.
Mister Clark?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Guy Horn. Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Aye, Richard.
Good evening, gentlemen, and thank you for indulging me in terms of my distant participation. I appreciate that.
So, so Richard, before you go, I'll leave the Registry of Deeds signature form downstairs in the police lobby for you to come by it.